For rural creek. Rural Creek City Council for August first day today.
Nineteen.
Nineteen twenty twenty five, final roll call, please.
Mayor Luke Dillon.
Here.
Councillor Robert Cheney.
Here.
Councillor Rick Hill.
Here.
Councillor Kathy Rannick.
Here.
And for the record, councillor Diana Larson is absent.
All right, stand up. I want to be just give the presence of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Public presentations. So this is Brian, Billy Pedigone.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Hello. I don't want to go over there.
See, you're, yes, your name in red, just for the.
Billy Pedigone Canyonville. I spoke last night in Canyonville, but I think I've talked over their head. Anyways, it's nice to see that everybody has different names, just saying. Billy Pedigone, one of the people as seen in the fifty state constitutions, Republican in form. Sui jurors do send you this notice by necessity in this court of record to make the following claims and that you provide immediate due care. Psalms forty nine, one, hear this, all ye people, give ear, all ye inhabitants of the worlds, both low and high, rich and poor, together. My mouth shall speak of wisdom and the meditation of my heart shall be of understanding. Oregon State Constitution, honor God, defend the family, restore the public. Are you aware of your state constitutions? Does everybody know of the state constitution? Do you know what, do you know that it is the governing document of the United States? Article one bill of rights, it is our right and you cannot even sneeze or nothing on our rights. We declare that all men, when they form a social compact, are equal and right. That all power is inherent in the people and all free men governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their peace, safety and happiness. And they have at all times a right to alter, reform or abolish the government in such manner as they may think proper. The first, the servants take an oath. The mode of administering administering an oath or affirmation shall be as such most consistent with and binding upon the conscience of the person to whom such oath or affirmation may be administered. Private property, and that is your children, shall not be taken for public use, nor the particular services of any man be demanded without just compensation, nor except in the case of the state, without such compensation first assessed and tendered. Leviticus nineteen eighteen, thou shall not revenge nor bear any grudge against the children of thy people. Thou shalt not, thou shalt love thy neighbor as thyself, I am the Lord. Marbury versus Madison has never been defeated. The judicial power of the United States is extended to all cases arising under the constitution. If the legislator should change that rule and declare one witness or a confession out of court sufficient for conviction must the constitution principle yield to the legislator act? Statutes, codes, bills, policies do not apply to the people. We are private, we are not public. This oath certainly applies in any special manner to their conduct and official character. How immoral to impose it on them if they were to be used as the instruments and the known instruments for violating what they swore to support. Servants take an oath to all fifty one of the constitutions. Matthew eighteen sixteen, I'm quoting the Bible because that is the common law and that is our authority. But if he will not hear thee, then take with thee one or two more in the mouth of two or three witnesses. Every word may be established, came James Version. Common law is the fundamental fundamental constitutions that are guaranteed. The preamble of the constitution is the spirit of the constitution. It is my wish, order, demand, all children, and that includes you, for we are all the children of God, to understand and know our fundamental rights that are guaranteed. And in order for that to happen, we need to have by necessity, necessity overruled overrules the law. A town hall meeting for all to be welcome to learn and study the fifty one fundamental constitutions and learn the maxims. Maxims are reproduced from Black's Law. And that's what the Supreme Court uses, you cannot defeat a maxim, it's been been proven a time, time again. Court case, fundamental law, all of it, you cannot defeat a maxim. A maxim is so called because its dignity is cheapest and its authority the most certain and because it is universally accepted and approved by all. The foundation of our law is from Koch's institutes. Maxim, all political power is inherent in the people by decree of God. Thus none can exist except it be be deprived from derived from them. The main object of government is the protection, preservation of our personal rights, private property and public liberties and upholding the law of God. A frequent recurrence to the fundamental principles and a firm adherence to justice, virtue and original law are indispensable, necessary again, to preserve the blessings of liberty and good government. The law is not to be but not to be violated by those in government. Lapse of time does not bar the commonwealth. We can go after those people that are going after us and it doesn't matter on the time. Thank you for your time. And I do have a pamphlet for everybody because there is a there is something going on in California right now. My sister lives there and we own all jurisdictions. We all have to take care of each other and I don't care what state you are in because we own all jurisdictions. We were taught wrong and we were, we were, we were not taught by our teachers. They have deprived us of our civil liberties. They have not taught us the constitutions and we don't even know. I am actually a precinct member of the Republican Party and I don't even look at the emails anymore. They want you to write the legislators to let them know how you feel about taking away their, your gun rights. I don't tell them how I feel. I wish, I demand and I and I demand them. You will not infringe on my rights. If you do, I will fine you five thousand dollars a day. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy.
And here's my pamphlet, because everybody knows this man. And the law that is trying to be passed right now in California is it's a human trafficker dream that can take your child, a stranger can take your child from school or from anywhere. All they have to do is sign an affidavit and it's not like a THS or CPS and that you don't have to have a mandate or there's nothing you can do as a parent. We have to do whatever we can because this has always been about the children, always. We need to get our grandfathers back. We need to take grandfathers into our own hands. Thank you. And I do want to add, you guys are aware maybe, and I, I don't know, this is rumor, that Larry Rainville got fired from Seven Feathers. I don't know what happened here, but he is not here anymore and that's neither here nor there. But it is my wish, order and demand, he is in Canyonville. And Larry or Lonny something Rainville.
Oh Lonny.
Lonny Rainville, I don't even know the guy, but if you know his character and his intentions are not good, you need to call the city, this mayor, she has her and two other family members on there and that is not, we need to know what her intentions are because that is not distribution of power, that is too much control. People have told me in town, I live in Canyonville, I've been there my whole life. And they said that there is nothing they can do in Canyonville because they are overrun by family members. And that is not justice. So just pray that you've got included on your heart to call her and tell her. He, if he does not have good intentions here, then why do we have him in Canyonville?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, we, all these are recorded and she, I, I would encourage her to listen.
I'm honored to.
Thank you.
I talked to her yesterday about this, they're not him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, citizens, start on non-adherence. That would have been that, oh. Consent agenda, we have consent agenda in part one, approval of minutes of regular city council meeting for August third, twenty twenty five and consent agenda part two. I know your receipt of apparel in for for July.
I'll make a motion that we accept consent agenda, part one and part two.
Oh, yes, for the record, Diana Larson is president.
No, I'm talking about. We need to figure that out.
What?
The time compared to, you know, something that I can't, both my pad and my phone, my car, they all, they one time and I couldn't care.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Get on the same timeline.
Right.
Yeah. All right, any, I said a motion.
Second.
So yeah, any discussion, hard to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Who's name? Ask, we move on to department reports, planning and community development report.
We didn't have any planning items or community development to place on the agenda at this time.
Finance officer report.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'd like to submit my written report for the financial activities in the record and I'm willing to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Now another question, someone one took the time, it's on here, calling the blue, just by hearing. In the middle it says period amount and then year and day amount, they always look the same, are they?
But at the beginning of the fiscal year.
Uh huh. So are, so it there will be differences as we go through the year then?
Yes.
So, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for us? Police department report.
Evening, mayor and council. I'd like to, my report is written, answer any questions that you may have. Then after any questions, do you have my report before you go, before we move on? There was something else that I wanted to bring your attention either since there's, since it's active to have the the powers of doing the hiring or firing, I wanted to bring something else to your attention before we move on.
Well, this stuff, you know, we're, we're toward the end of August now and all this stuff happens a lot, so you read it again, it's like, man, that's old news, but.
I know. It seems like ages ago.
Yeah, you guys were busy there for a couple of days.
Yeah, yeah.
Very busy.
Yeah, we're blessed that everything worked out the way it did, so.
What's the barricaded subject at the very end, it says who's charged with disorderly conduct section in the second grade and escaped in the third degree, what does that mean?
So it's even the thirty meters and levels, but basically when the officer arrived and after the call, he had the court on his hand, he's approached the officer, the officer tells him, he's under arrest. His stop takes off and he, he basically, you know, moves one array to another and barricades himself in the van. So the statute that would constitute an escape in the third degree, it's, it's escaping without force.
Yeah.
I can't let the continuity pass as far as the K nine program. Well, these are, this would not include the extra costs for overtime, extra fuel, increased oil changes and tires. So there was an electric vehicle that was the canine vehicle. It has dog mode. Well, I'm just, I'm just letting you know because you cited those as extra costs. Those costs would not be incurred if you have an electric vehicle. And that's something that also if the force had electric vehicles instead of sitting there idling and using fuel and all those parts moving and stuff, you have the climate on and the car's ready to go as soon as you need to go.
But there's still, there's still a great cost because it's burning electricity, so we have to pay for the electricity to charge it back up. So, you know, the cost difference, so I'm actually kind of looking at the math now, if you're doing the math like at your home, it's, it's obviously cheaper, but we're having to charge from the station right now, like the, the cost difference isn't much difference. I'm actually, I'm like twenty five miles per gallon at a charging station. It rated, so if you were averaging the vehicle like twenty five miles per gallon, it was like three seventy, about three seventy is what you were paying for that charge. So it was, it was actually a little bit more than fuel. And so it's, if it's running, it's using electricity. So I'm trying to figure where like.
It's twenty dollars a month average per electric vehicle at home. Twenty dollars.
Well, but that depends on what you're driving. And like a police vehicle, it's constantly running and idling and, and so I'm just trying to like get on the same page of like.
Yeah.
Of the cost.
Doing more, but also you don't have to wear and tear on all those parts when you're sitting in your patrol car now idling and all of those belts and the fuel and the oil, it's just, there's so many more things in an electric, in a gas car than aren't in an electric car when it's just sitting there with its climate on, waiting to go out and back.
Can I ask a question? Why, why does rural Oregon have electric cars? It makes no sense. If they go out in the woods, you're dead in the water. Everybody knows Tiller. I mean, I've lived here my whole life. And they can abandon that vehicle, the police officer in a heartbeat. You're not going to be up, they're going to be stuck in the water and they're going to be, they're going to be the fish out of water. I think you're like.
And that's why, and that's why.
There's, there's several electric vehicles out there now that are, it's good. My husband has a Rip Van, it's just as good. I have been over those roads in my ass, which is really low and it goes.
I'm not talking about the mud. I'm talking about they're going to run out of batteries and then we're going to have to go up there and get the gas. Three hundred and some miles.
Can I go?
Do you know how, do you know how much it is around Tiller? I mean, I'm, I have, I have, my whole family's longer than that. I'm sorry, I don't know.
Can I just. Number one, when I saw it, I, I was excited. I appreciate your help or the work that you put in here to this, but we just, I keep going back to our budget. We're seven hundred thousand dollars in the hole. We shouldn't even be talking about a new, another vehicle. And there are various costs here, but we could offset those costs if we were all seriously committed to doing this. I think it's just a good time for discussion. I appreciate your following through. I, I wouldn't just get the biggest kick out of some sort of demonstration and then we go from there.
Right.
You know.
And so.
Having a K nine.
Right. And so this is something that you all brought to my attention and I, I said I would look into, on the electric vehicle, I had not supported electric vehicle for the police. And in, in, in the reasoning of this, and it, there's going to be arguments on both sides of pros and cons, but the, the reality is we work and live in a rural area. And these officers respond to, to things, whether it's pursued through hot calls to assist outside of the city of Rural Creek and you don't know when these, these calls come in, if you run out of half charge or a half tank or a full tank or a full charge. And so the reality is, is we gotta go, we gotta go. And if we get out in ten buck two and we had to leave on a half a charge or quarter charge, you know, you, you, you Tesla make it three hundred and some miles, but that police vehicle is not going to get that. And when you're climbing up mountains and things like that, so then you're dead in the water, we gotta call it, tell them, stuff like that. So i- in my opinion, with the, with the knowledge that I know of the electric vehicle in the area that we work in and, and live in, it's just not feasible for the technical word we do. You know, but again, I haven't had any experience, that's.
You would only need someday they could.
Right, yes, absolutely. I think with technology.
Tickets better.
And if she could somehow separate the cost as far as exactly how much it costs for the police vehicles, but that's the same thing as the fire blankets. Without actual numbers, we'll never know.
Right.
And I need you to have clarify your statement, councillor, right? Of seven hundred thousand in the hole. Yeah, you mentioned a couple of that.
Yeah. Well, I, I know, I'll keep, I'll keep bringing that up because I asked Lonny before, he, how much the flood costs us and he said seven hundred thousand dollars. So I'm assuming that we just didn't have that laying around, that that is, we're in the red for that much.
Well, we're talking about that today.
The, you know, they're supposed to get.
We're talking about that today.
Oh, yes, yes, we are, we are not beholden, we are not, oh, we're not, oh, okay, well, then, then I, I stand corrected.
Like negative.
Yeah, okay.
On, on the other discussing, I appreciate it because I know we've brought this up two or three months ago and asked you to check in. That's all you're doing is you're checking into it and we're getting the numbers and, and it looks like it's going to be very expensive, regardless of we get.
But they're sure.
Yeah.
And he's looking at it.
But, but the, the last thing is you gotta have an officer who's capable of doing it and willing to do it. It's a huge responsibility. It's a big investment from all the donors and the K nine associations and all that that are going to be doing it. And, you know, it's a big investment in the community, but one of the things that you don't want is to get a dog and then short time down the road, all of a sudden the handler decides he doesn't want to do it or they leave and now you gotta figure out what to do with that dog. It's not fair to the dog and everybody invested in it. So my, my thing at this time, I don't feel that we have anybody in the department that who, I, I don't know that we have anybody right now who's capable of doing it, that's actually wants to, to do it because it is such a huge commitment, not only at, at your work time, but that dog lives with you. So, you know, you have to take care of it twenty four seven and anytime that you're going to, to leave or go on days off or vacation, you have to make arrangements for that dog to be taken care of. So if it's something that, you know, council is really interested in and, you know, maybe we want to move forward in the future of looking for donations and stuff. Because a lot of this money you can get, you can get through donations and grants for vehicles out. So what you're looking at is basically the cost of overtime and feeling like things like that. But if it's something that council wants to move forward, maybe in the future look at, and we, we get somebody who's willing and committed to do it, then I'm all for it.
And the dog only has a short working life, doesn't it?
You know, it could be, it could be eight years. It just, it, it just depends. I mean, you never know with a dog. I mean, a dog can be healthy one day and it's four years old and then all of a sudden the next day it starts to sell a disease and it's got cancer, so.
It's a huge investment and not for a long term thing.
Yeah, also.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I, I mean, the notes that I have written, as I read it was, but I felt like it was, this is something we really needed and personally we buy it up, right? Like, was it really a huge need? I think we have access to K nine when we need it, right? It's been very, right, is it pretty rare that we request that?
Yeah, it doesn't happen often. And, and right now at this point, there's, you know, there's several, I think the sheriff's office has two or three. Winston has one and Roseburg now has one as of recent. So at, at this point, we, we have access. I don't, I don't know the future, I don't know what that's going to look like.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you're not going to use it very often.
Yeah.
And.
It's a large, it's a large population that we're not going to be with the.
Right. It's, it's a good community PR.
Yeah.
One of the big benefits of it, yeah.
Anything else for Jonathan before you guys chairman? Good.
So the, the thing that was on the agenda I wanted to bring up is we were looking into a chaplain for the police department. I think it's important for the officer, it's important for the community. Obviously we wanted the right fit, the opportunity kind of came to me. So a gentleman by the name of Pablo Rode. He's been a chaplain for the Oregon State Police Department, Roseburg Office for over a year. From I met him, he was interested in, in being a chaplain here. So looked into, we do in the background. Lonny had left, so Zach, you know, didn't have the authority to make the decision. So he was, we did a background on him, everything looked good. His background is, he's a graduate of the IC ISF course, assisting individuals in crisis and a group crisis. He's a member of the Southern Oregon Public Safety of Chaplains. He's a Sunday school teacher and spiritual mentor. He's, he's retired, so he, you know, time, he's got plenty of time on his hands. The cost of the city for that is very minimal. The only cost is for basically insurance if he were to, to be killed while he's assisting you. Because if you do ride along to the officers and stuff like that, it's thirteen fifty one a month.
Thirteen forty nine.
Thirteen forty nine.
Thirty dollars, three and nine cents.
Yeah. So it's under a hundred and sixty dollars a year is what the cost would be. So I just need to know if you as the council, the whole are okay with us going, moving forward and having Pablo as the chaplain for the police department? Or if you're not interested in it?
I mean, I think it's very curious to know. I don't remember this ever coming up before, which is fine. But is this been an even, you get it in the for a while or?
Yeah, I mean, we've had people reach out to us before. It was kind of interesting being a chaplain. It's like, I don't know that they're going to be the right fit, again, because the officers have to be comfortable with working with them and, you know, and, and then riding the car because they do a lot of ride alongs with the officer.
So I guess what's the, what, which is, what would you be doing specifically?
The police, man.
Yeah. Supporting the more supporting the officers.
And if we're our officers, say we have an incident where there's a suicide and there's family, you come out.
Amazing, people working with families, like the, the community as well.
Right, if, if they, if they want that, yeah, that would be something we would offer them. So we go out on a call. Obviously, you know, it's a crisis and they're very distraught. We can offer them, you know, we have a chaplain. Is that something you're interested in? Having our chaplain come in and talk into you, I mean, if they are, then we'll call them and have them come out.
There's another, yes, the past quite often that with the sheriff department states of reason with their chaplains is we may get called from a different agency to go tell somebody in our neighborhood, a death notification. And the chaplain will usually call the deputy area officer and say, do you want me to go with you or do you want me to do it? It is very good support. Where we have, we've had, she leaves in Riverbury before, when chaplain come in and ride with the officer and give him some support, you know, and stuff like that that you wouldn't get. I think a chaplain is very important and is basically free to us.
Yeah, it, it's something, again, yeah, the officers, right with the officers and, you know, they can feel comfortable with it, but it's, it's confidential. You know, the conversation between them, say we have an officer we think is maybe going through a rough time, get hold of chaplain, hey, you go ride with the officer. Make sure everything's okay with them, so.
Thirty percent.
I think it's a great idea. Please, I guess we need to make a motion. If you want to do that.
I make a motion that we prefer starting firsters request for the chaplain to be put on the payroll.
I second the motion. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
I think it'd be really, really good because of all of the movements, I think they're pulling out their hair, they're screaming. They need a lot of the pastors and the chaplains to get together and just really help them because you know their mind.
Before you take the vote, and, and I said the cost, so they would get a polo shirt that says, you know, rural police department chaplain. And, and someone get a badge and, and the others sometimes you'll get them a class A uniform. I mean, this is like, we're talking a few hundred dollars. Class A uniform because say, say there's a, a worse service they have to go to, they're going to get up and speak. We obviously want to look professional and represent the police department. But other than that, there's, there's zero cost.
Sounds to me like the service would far outweigh the cost.
It is, yeah, it's.
Just have the emotional support. All right, I gave the votes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's name? Which one do you care?
Thank you.
So, will you be coming down for you right away then, sir?
Yeah, so we can do a couple, a couple of different things. The talks on the other agency, they usually have them do a swear in, just like a regular officer, officer, they'll take the oath. So if the council wishes, I could have them come to the next council meeting and swear in actually at the council meeting. Or typically we've just done it during the week and count. So whatever you'd like, I, I have no issues of putting.
It's hard again, is needs to be official support in the start. I mean, if we had that happen sooner, it'd have been, yeah, it'd be great to have him come in. If we like to meet him, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. So I can, I can definitely give you the swear in, I can let you guys know if you can make it, great, but I can let him know that he can make the next council meeting and kind of introduce himself to you guys.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Thank you, G. Thank you.
Anything else for please? Fire department report.
Does anybody know?
No.
On the car fires.
Diana, I think you'll get the first call if there is one. I bet.
They had a whole car carrier of Teslas burn up. It took four hours to put it out. I don't know if that was just to let them burn until they were done, but there were no blankets involved in that. And I don't think any of the cars on the carrier were the problem, so.
The cross cutter replaced the battery and I'm going to go to the car so you don't have to down out.
I would like to.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I would like to know. Every month I see the lids, I said lids.
Yeah, there's only four on this one.
I see, there was like sixty or so.
Yeah, there it is.
It's usually a bad hammer.
But if you look medically, it's higher and looks just lower, so I was just curious to find out if he just classified some of them under a different code.
Yeah, well, I was wondering, what's the cost on, is it just like all the others?
What's the what?
The, the cost on the public assistance lip. Since, from about seven months, it's sixty. He's, he's had to go, I guess it's go out on a call to help the person out. So how, what's the difference in the cost of that versus? So how, what's the difference in the cost uh, of that versus?
I don't know. It's kind of an unknown, because if they're on a lift assist and there's somebody else that's having like a real emergency and blood or death. And they can't give to that. So that's an unknown.
You know, it's still. Is it being handled by someone else or is that what you're saying?
It's just, it's something that takes up a lot of the time of the uh, volunteer fire department people. And some uh, other communities have started charging after like three times to the same address. And they maybe need to look at moving that person into a care home or someplace else besides. Calling uh, nine one one and having the city services come.
I think we do the the false alarms. Isn't there something?
We know what you're, some cities do after, you know, federal ones, yeah, and they start charging uh, businesses and residents for the alarms.
It just seems like a really big cost that maybe we could mitigate. I mean, it's hard to when the.
But there's really no extra cost. Whether Manny has to get up to two in the morning like. The other night before, and he just responds and 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 he helps us. There's no really anything extra comes.
Yeah, I think just the gas to, if fire truck to get there back would be your only cost.
So it's not a conflicting call when they're doing something like that. And we, that's an unknown.
Okay. Right, thank you.
Uh, works for.
I'd like to submit my report from the record.
What happened on? He's worked with cameras, that's fairly, we got everything fairly new.
Uh, we was just, so whenever they did all that subdivision, they put two by fours out there to mark where the laterals went out of the property. We was just trying to locate with the salt for uh, for one of the new council there in the building.
Yeah.
Yeah. What is the summer preventative main deck subsystems? With what, what is all that into?
The for the wastewater waste part? I'm not a hundred percent sure. I I think they're basically changing the oil in their gearboxes and. And all that, get ready geared up for winter.
Any other questions for public works? Uh, regular agenda. Um, city administrator, pro temp. You're gonna talk about Zach. And so. Sue salary and other anything else you guys like.
That would be in the second section.
You know, there's a session. So, um, I I reviewed the uh. Um, some of the things that I joined had put in the drop box. I really like the idea of. Um, Matt Birch was just very short, to the point. And really, um, in my mind, I mean. You guys can do everyone, but um, I was just thinking like, you know, and during this temporary period, just stating. Hey, this is what your increase is gonna be during this temporary period, um, until we hire somebody. And then obviously, you have an option to, you know, apply that job to you, but uh, just during this period of, until we have somebody. Official and this is what it's gonna be, and figure out what that increase is gonna be. Uh, I know I was calculating. Uh, he's currently at um, seventy five hundred a month. Um.
Can I make a one thing though?
Sure.
So he was uh, increased three percent because he has the pool certs.
Okay.
So he was increased three percent for when the pool was open. So that'll go, when the pool closes, that'll go back down to his normal.
Okay. On that roll, are you good?
Uh, no, normally we have somebody that is certified in the pool and that they keep that all year, all year round.
Yeah.
But there was, um.
Coming to my.
Yes, that was my, there was some conflict of uh. Who was gonna run the pool? Um, and Zach was the only one that has the certs.
Right.
I remember those, you remember those couple of days the pool was closed down?
Yes, I do. I guess, I mean, does that, this your certification go away because the pool goes?
No.
No, and yeah, this was, this was all just.
We're taking it away because the pool is, yes, closed for the summers. But that, that what you're saying?
That's what I mean.
I was like, this, this was all obviously a discussion. I mean, it wasn't anything actually inside even, but uh, yeah, so this was one of his.
I mean, that's gotta be correct.
At this moment in time, Zach is the only one with the pool certification.
Right.
And the pool was, we're gonna work, not run the pool, we're gonna keep the pool full all the time.
Yeah, yeah. And it maintains.
We're gonna.
So, so that's a moot point then. We have to have the certification place all year long. That's, that might be what we made it place all year long.
My question on that is maybe D didn't know, but are. You gonna be in charge of the pool from now on or whoever took the minus place? Is he eventually gonna get that? Is it gonna be go back to him or do we know? I have encouraged him to go that direction, but I don't think he is making.
I don't also, it was not in his uh.
Job.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was made clear then he didn't have to get it by morning, right? Which, and then we have to shut the pool down.
Why did we have to shut it down? Who who was minded as a pool when that?
Somebody that was uncertified.
So our new uh, public knowledge guy was running the pool who did not have the certification. Zach was told that when the pool got open, don't worry about it. We don't need to, you don't need to worry about it. So Zach had nothing to do with the pool. And then the guy running the pool, some things, chemicals and everything went awry, had to close down because, well.
Definitely operate under your certificate.
We we are now.
But it was, that, but that's all.
We're not at that.
That was the handle on the chemicals that didn't do the right. And how come you weren't?
I was told not to worry about it. There was gonna be a building to make this operator's job, so I.
Well, I I think that's a moot point now. You're there and it's in place and I think it's still stayed in place.
We're talking about the compensation benefits for them and I agree with you, which uh, Joanna gave us several different cities how they do it. And their average between seven and ten percent uh, increase, a lot of them, I know it's some of those cities where they just took their police chief, who's already administrator. Moved him up and gave him like seven percent raise or ten percent during the timeframe. So I would kinda be apt to. There's about a twenty two thousand dollar difference between, I think, when you get paid and if the city administrator gets paid. So I I think if we gave like a ten percent bump, that would bring him about in the mid, he's, you know, it's not gonna bring him up to what the city administrator is paying. But he's just a pro temp, so.
Right.
A ten percent.
There there's still some qualifications that need to come there before we can move on up.
And that's gonna be what a lot of the cities are doing, between seven and ten percent.
Yeah, that's where I was meeting too, so.
Yeah, I I would think that would be somewhere to start. Uh, the other, the different, other thing on uh. Benefits and compensation, right now, our two administrators are police administrator, police chief. And our city administrator, they get an extra, is it ten days?
Uh, fourteen days of admin time.
Fourteen days of admin time, um, and that's to, cause he can part of the meetings.
I'm sorry, that fourteen is eighty hours. I'm sorry, ten days, yeah, eighty hours.
So, and that, divide that by twelve months, that's six point six hours that, um. I think we need to give him that six point six hours onto his, his leave time to take care of the stuff. The only other question that I would have on that is, he's. In charge of the the public works right now and he's our charger and I think if it's at midnight. A water main bus and he has to get called out to come take care of that broken water main. You know, that should be, he's gonna be compensated for for that too. He does not take that out of six point six. Admin hours.
So he can still approve comp time? Is that what?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that um, typical right now, comp time? Is that a thing that's been around?
He can approve.
Yeah.
But people that are exempt, uh, so me, the city administrator, um, and the public works director. That was named was, um, are exempt and not approved on that.
And and myself too.
Oh, sorry, yes, I'm sure.
And that's why we get the the eighty hours a year of admin time for that. If we don't use it, we lose it, like. So if we were to retire or leave or something before the end of the year, you you don't get paid out for that. Um, and if you don't use it before the end of the year, then it just goes away and then it's sort of eighty again.
And only the city administrator and the police chief get that added time.
Yes. It's in both the contracts. So that's what I'm saying. He's gonna be the pro temp, it's six point six hours. Cause he has to come to these meetings twice a month and there's gonna be other things. There's gonna be starter take care that you're, you spend a lot of hours.
And you make it's proven to just justify the ten percent.
I I think so, ten percent would put him in between where he's at now and.
So it's only a four, four dollars and thirty one cents more an hour. At ten percent, yeah.
Do we need a lot?
I was, no, I was actually thinking more than that. I maybe, do you see ten percent? I was really, yeah, I guess I, I was looking more at dollars and I didn't look at the percentage of what that increase was. What what were you thinking there? Um. What what was your, what was your high end for? What was your end for the uh, the city administrator?
I think right now the city administrator is hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and eighty five dollars.
And that was.
And and he was towards, he's, he's right at seventy nine. So a ten percent.
It was an eighty eight.
Eighty nine, eighty nine.
Well, yeah, that's only eighty nine, yeah, so it's nine, so it's.
Seventy nine and thirteen, ninety and thirteen.
So there's twenty two, twenty three thousand dollars.
Twenty three, yeah, I'm clear. And I was looking at, um, which I, I kinda remember about it. I guess I'll give them back to about where you were. Cause eighty nine thousand was around forty three dollars an hour. I was calculating and I was thinking of jumping up to fifty dollars an hour.
Which would rather be about fifty, so fifteen percent would take him to forty nine to fifty eight.
So I was thinking like, jumping to one or two ish. I was kinda.
We were right, cause my camera center would be a little less than 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 the middle, but I was.
I was kinda on the, I was with Rick on the ten percent right there.
Yeah, but I, I just wondered, you had a good name? In between what we're discussing or where's, where's your thoughts on it?
I think ten percent would be sufficient.
Kevin? Um, yeah, considering he has, he's, has to deal with the pool. I would agree, like, probably fifteen percent.
But is the three percent already there?
Yes.
So he's already.
Three percent since we reached, uh, since July first.
But he loses it after the pool shuts down.
Well, that's what you got, that, that's, I think we discussed just keeping it year round if he's gonna have to do the maintenance.
So how about that, um, we keep his three percent as long as he has the pool thing, give an additional ten percent and that's right in between the ten and fifteen for.
They hold, along along with the, the days that you were talking about. Yeah, yeah, in your normal position, uh, and uh. Uh, what you do, uh, and and then you have the certification. And then this other gentleman who was uh, encouraged you, do you manage him?
Yes.
Yeah, in a, in your normal job?
No.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't.
He didn't, so he answered to the city administrator.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah. Is that, is that normal? Like, I just wanna make sure, like.
Yes.
Around them.
So that was.
About what what's happening, but it looks more like a typical, was that person normally should have been answering to the city administrator?
Yeah, because he was a department head.
Okay, good. Reason why I ask is cause like, if you were to end up, or you have your certification, but somebody else were to get it. You would, like, would it matter, maybe, uh, would it, uh, would I say, um. Would it matter anymore for you to have it, I guess, is the question. You just had it because we just needed somebody to have it. You were the one first back, right?
Yeah, well, normally you would, normally that would be on you to have. Does that kind of understand?
Go ahead.
So that is something Michael brought to everyone's attention was the need to have a backup. Because when the pool is getting ready to open, there's periods of time where it's around the clock. Monitoring of the chemicals and stuff, which hides a person from leaving for a family or anything. And he had previously requested a couple of times to please have a backup, so.
Someone that's certified.
Yeah, so that might be something that would be.
So what do you mean, who was to have two people certified?
Yeah.
Whoever, uh, who was it to most play? Well, Brian, yeah, we, if him do it and you, you keep yours, yeah. Hopefully, we'll run it wrong. Yeah, this year would be nice to have two people that can can take care of that monitor, absolutely.
What does getting certified entail?
I don't know. It's, I think about an eight hour course and then on fourth, then there's a five hour training class and. Um, then you gotta pass a test.
Yeah, I think it would be prudent to have one person that's certified, that's good, again.
So what we're talking about is, he keeps it three percent, he's got the pool certificate, give him the additional ten percent while he's in the interim. That'd be thirteen percent and he gets the six point six hours of uh, admin time to take care of. The extra admin time after hours. Um, and then I say, if, if he has to, he called in at two in the morning or on Sunday. Because there's a serious water break, I think he should be able to keep his compensation as that.
Uh, so does the only approved comp time if he's called in, or does he approve comp time anything over eight hours a day?
On his regular duty, wh- where it stands now.
Where has it been before?
Anything over eight hours a day. Or if you're called in, then you get the comp time.
So we're saying if it's a Friday and the water main breaks at four in the afternoon, it would be here till seven.
Right, or he's here for this council meeting. He would get comp time for that also.
Was that?
That's a six point six, that's a three point six.
Okay, this, this is the thing I'm asking because how many hours, let's just, did you work last week?
I don't know, there was, I had a pager last week. There was twelve hours overtime, twelve hours.
Comp time.
Comp time. And then I had, what, two call offs, one call off, two call offs?
I think two, yeah.
Well, then I know, should I think by Friday of last week, I had sixteen hours overtime at the time I got done. With all the different meetings and stuff that we do here and.
Do we need to, do we need to maybe further define admin time, what that looks like when it comes to what's expected? With this position, so that, like. And I guess, you know, what's appropriate, cause I mean. With admin time, he's expected to be here at the city council meeting.
Right.
Um. Does that need to go again, like, should we have, you know, make sure that could lie as not comp time, but in a normal kind of time?
So is he like an exempt employee when he's, but then when he gets called out or has the pager, then he approves comp time?
That, that's the reason there, right? I think that's. The idea is.
You get a smarter.
Cause I, I feel like he has his, the job as his current position. We're just trying to add a, a, a layer of that. And so everything underneath, everything that he's had been doing up until this point, save the thing, right? And then with that, what's that neighbor above that, we're trying to compensate for extra, for doing these extra duties. Uh, which I, I tend, but yes, that could take up, I guess the problem with this is. Not, not a problem, but he has this extra, these extra duties as the administrator. That he's gonna be taking on, which would, could cause him to go into extra comp time. Because he didn't have enough time to take enough care of some of those things. I'm wondering if that's a, does that make sense to a basket? Is that, you 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 think that is a possibility? Um, uh, do you see that happening in the last couple of weeks? Cause like, you know, you have this extra administration center work. As as this new role, are you seeing yourself doing actual comp time?
No, no, I try to try.
But but as what we're saying, the anything that dealing specifically with the city administrator position. Would not be considered comp for comp time, you know, since the other stuff, I mean, he's called out, but it's taken. Pager or the overtime, but it's taken up extra time during his day, so where like, he's not able to get his job done. So is he, is is his normal job done?
I think it's.
So we wanna make sure that we're accommodating that.
I think if it goes along, it's gonna be easier for us now, is that the, the difference between, I think, the, the contract shows. Management leave, that's what you and significant versus the comp time. So. I think who should be, maybe we should order different. Give it six point six hours management time, which is to take care of the extra stuff he's doing here and there as a city administrator. But then if he does get called out to take care of sewer problems or water problems, then he gets his comp time. I think that clarifies it.
And that's either on my end, or payable, same file, okay.
Cause there is two different, I'm just reading this in, in the contract, is there is a management leave and then there's comp time.
Good. For the second one, uh, verify that.
Um, I have more, I have more questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, in, in the budget, so normally, obviously, we have a city administrator, and then we have Zach over here. And Zach is split between water, sewer, and streets in the budget, that's how his payroll is. So do you want me to keep his water, sewer, and streets, and then just take those ten percent out of support services where the normal administrator would be? Or how do you want me to, yes?
Yes, yeah, I, yes, I, yeah.
Okay, um, and then the. In the past, the city administrator, the prior city administrator changed his spending limits, and you guys approved it to twenty five thousand dollars. He could sign off on twenty five thousand dollars for any of his departments to spend. Do you wanna keep that the same for the pro temp, or do you want to change that in any way?
I think he had.
Keep it the same, yeah.
Yeah, the reasoning behind raising it seemed reasonable.
So I think there's that, when we get loads of chemicals down at the water.
They're about fifty, they're about fifteen thousand dollars, right?
And I think he has to come to our city council every time he's there, so keep chemicals.
Yeah, with prices increasing everywhere. Um, and then his prior position is still available after the six months, all that still stays the same? Or he'll go back, go way back to where it was?
Speaking of, we should address that too. I have some ideas on that, since we missed, we missed the vote on the deadline for the uh, getting on the ballot. The way it works, it would be that his six months would end before we could have it on the ballot, and we'd be without somebody again. So my thinking, and this is just, just me, is leaving him in that position as interim. Until the end of the year, and then at the end of the year, hire him. And if, if he's so choosy, and if we see some progress towards wanting to take that position. Hire him on as the full uh, time city administrator, which would give him six months. To move into the city, that one state in the charter, six months. And that would give us the six months to go to vote in uh, May on the charter issue.
Is it May or March?
It's.
March would be a special election that would cost, and May would not, it would.
May would not, and it would still be within the six months.
That's how we had, telling the beginning.
We didn't, we didn't make the deadline.
That we were, uh, pre- preparation.
It was for candidates and not for a lot of them, so.
So, but that's just, you know, that way we, we can do it, and we wouldn't have to worry about trying to hit missing.
Doesn't he have, that's a rigorous background check, isn't that something that we expect, because we haven't vetted Sean for lying? So.
So you, you're suggesting bypassing, going through a, a application process for the position?
Well, we could go through the application, sorry, I'm saying if, if, just leaving him in position till the end of, of December, put December as the deadline. For if we decide to go out, or we can hire him in, we don't have, we don't have to.
Oh, I know that.
In the meantime, we're going, we're gathering applications, aren't we?
No, we haven't put it out yet, sometimes, we have not put the decision out, out there yet, you know. We, we still, or, or, we still, yeah, uh, working on the vote, we wanted to see what happened with the vote. And that's another thing, if we put it in to place, are we going to put that in? That requirement in our job description when it goes out there, when we're gonna go to a vote on the charter come March?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it needs to be, that's what you're saying.
Okay, so you're saying we missed the deadline to put the change.
The wrapper in the box about, yes.
Uh, criteria of living in Murdock Creek, we missed that, so we have to stick with what's in the charter now. And what's in the charter now says they have to live in Murdock Creek.
They have to move it in the state.
But we haven't even started getting applications, and why?
We were waiting, cause we were expecting to go on with that without.
Right.
Okay, so now that's not applicable, and so we need to talk about getting applications?
If that's what, if that's where out there you wanna go.
It doesn't cost anything, that's it.
No, but you're doing the same thing, if you get applications and we go, and application, then any bunch of people, they're all gonna be, be the same thing as Zach, is they.
Well, we, I guess, I'm kind of following Fox timeline a little bit, we could have it set so that, um. If we wanted to have applications, but also give him opportunity to be on the platform as well.
Yeah.
Um, we could do it so that that job starts January. And so then we can, you know, accept applications, go through that process a little bit, and have an opportunity to kind of look at somebody, and then we, the timeline would work that way, I think.
Yeah, it's a good work, yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's an option, I guess, if you guys want to, you know.
I would absolutely like to get applications, see who, I could, and that.
Oh, it definitely is gonna happen, if, even if, if Zach decides that we're gonna appoint him later down the road, so we're gonna appoint him.
Yeah, he's gotta go through the same processes.
Yep, and I know we're gonna talk about, I mean, obviously, not me, but we push on our charter amendments here, even though, later in the.
Yeah, just double way.
Yeah.
So we can talk about that in detail, uh, but yeah. To me, getting back to conversation, we still need a motion, right?
I, I make a motion that, that part, the new administration go in. Keeps his three percent pool certificate, we give an additional ten percent raise while he's pro temp. Um, he approves six point six hours management time. As far as doing the administration, and then if there is any call out on the public works, then he will approve comp time for that.
A clarification of those type of things.
Second. Sorry, we're not more.
Sorry, uh, clarification, uh, six point six administrative or management time, is that like a weekly?
Per month.
That's per month, okay.
What that is, is.
That's one of the.
Their, they get ten days, which is eighty a month, or eighty a year, divide eighty by twelve, and that, that's how I came up with six point six. So it's basically the same thing, just tell him, saying he's getting his, his ten days.
Well, also on that, um, they would get a front loaded January first, you want me to go, go month by month? And add a six point six?
I would rather do that, if we, how long it's gonna be.
Right, okay, I just wanna be sure that I'm, yeah.
Yeah, I think just to save, uh, the city, that would provide me the best way to do that.
Do we need to, um, so obviously we need to write a contract and have that put together.
You mentioned you liked the resolution, the function that Medford did.
Yeah.
Was Medford, there's one of them that, that had it, they wrote out a contract, and so we write the contract, it says that we're talking, talking now. And put it in the contract, and then the mayor signs it, and then uh, Zach will sign it.
Maybe Medford was just that simple.
Yeah, I, I aligned with, uh, the mayor said, about that.
If it was the Medford, the one that had the contract, yes, one of them you sent us, could you send us, Warrenton, Medford, there's.
Medford was a brief resolution, I think, that just discussed compensation for the additional duties for the time.
Which one had the contract, Warrenton?
They had one, and you know, someone else.
So what would you, who's favorite, where you say you prefer?
I would prefer a contract, so. I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a shorter one, it's not, yeah, the, the full thing, but.
Yeah, I think it is important to kind of just detail. What is.
Who would have stayed in the head of contract, and it's not, it's not real elaborate, but it'll cover everything that we're talking about, so that there is a signed contract between. Zach and, and the city, and like I've said before, with the class of us, I believe that us as a city. We need to be accountable for the city charter and to the contracts, so.
So it's four.
Yeah, I would say yes, write a small contract.
So who's gonna do that?
All right, that I'm with everything I have.
Quiet.
More than the motion, the second.
I know, I'm asking some questions of, uh. Cause I, uh, I just wanna make sure that next steps are happening, are gonna be happening, uh, with this, so.
And then, is that part of the motion that once the contract is created, that includes? The language from the motion that the mayor is free to sign?
Right, I think, isn't that state has, isn't there mayor that, that signs it? Cause he has the authority to sign stuff for city council, so I would say yes.
Um, also make sure it states that it will be in, I believe we, like we did this last time, but I'm just clarify it. This will be, uh, retro active to the Tommy, uh, and place.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Make sure, clarify that too. Uh, do we need to put in any, you know, as a group, we're talking about, I mean, at the end of the year, do we need to make sure that's stated in the contract?
I think so, that's giving something really different, because, yeah, we're, we're shifting gears if we can do it in November. And that's something we can bump, we get down to the charter amendments and.
His, his funds actually would last until November, so if, if we decide to waffle a little bit, we can waffle.
And there's, there may be a situation where there's gonna be another timeframe, when we, if we do decide to take application, we're gonna go somewhere else. And we've been up the fellow director, or, or he just decides, I, I don't want this anymore, and then guess what? Then the charter, charter step repair becomes broke down, are we gonna point again? On the chart, can we have him do it for four months, and then Luke step in for two weeks, and then go back as it's safe? Has to be, it has to be.
It doesn't, it doesn't say one, it just, uh, no one has served more than, uh, six months. Uh, and doesn't say whether it's consecutive or concurrently or what, you know?
I mean, but the, the thing that later down the road that we, we could, if it comes to that, we'll, the discussion on it, but. Yeah, I mean, reading the, reading the charter.
Yeah, it's pretty, it was, uh, you could say, you know, he can, uh, his tech might be up. Point, uh, have the mayor serve for a day and bring a point, yeah.
Yes, sometimes, I mean, there's pipe, we start, we need to leak it before we make that decision.
Yeah, we said, yeah.
Uh, one last thing, I'd like to get Zach an opportunity to say, are you okay with?
I know it's, I know we're one making the last two, hopefully it's moved out.
Yes, yeah, okay.
You've got some good department heads that are willing to step in and help us, so.
And if you're like, yeah, I want you, I mean, I'm, I feel like you, you'll be transparent, but. Say what you need to say, if you have anything necessary to do, let it make sure we know, make sure it's communicated to us, so that. We can make sure you're getting help with stuff like that, so, yeah. Yeah. Um, all right, any other discussion?
Can you just, can you explain what, what you guys were just talking about? I'm kind of confused, cause I, I'm concerned about getting outside people to apply. So when does that happen, where we look for, for applications outside?
Well, we haven't talked, we haven't discussed it yet, no.
Oh, okay, thank God.
That is, that's awesome, we were talking about, yes, and I'm all for that myself too, I'm not, you know, we. We, we make amendments, everything we're asking for, and we as council think that's the perfect person to do it. And it's not, you know, not, tell that, sorry, see you later, he's still got his full time job, and. There's a chance that we have a superintendent of, uh, public works is gonna be retiring very soon, so I mean, that may be an option. Maybe Zach's gonna decide, three months down the road, is, I'm gonna continue being a real guy, I'm the best job I can, but this is what I really want. And we want to go some, a different direction with our administrator, we're not stuck to, to that.
Yes, we're probably, uh, the future, near future council mayor, probably our final rise, the job.
We need to have an extra, maybe one, yeah, to, to get the ball rolling.
What do you guys?
I, I would, I would like to give this process, tell us, yeah, me too.
Are you, well, well, let's, um, let's finalize this.
Yeah, we'll finish this motion and then.
So, um, all in favor of the motion that was presented by. Jose? Right, motion carries, you do there, okay. Um, let's talk, let's bring it up on the chart.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, so.
Um, FEMA Public Assistance Program.
So on that, um, I don't know if this worksheet got put in there, I don't.
We don't have any information, just that.
So on, on here are things that Lonnie was trying to get cleaned, cleaned out, or anything? Anybody out there?
Anybody wanna take a look at, always definite?
Watch that tripwire.
That's a list of things that were said that was lost.
By the city, and the, but.
Well, it was in the bunker during the flood, but I don't know how much of it was lost.
So my, so my other thing is Michael made the whole public, uh, building, make that list of things that were in the bunker, is that correct?
During the flood.
Yes.
This, this is here, yeah, everybody give, this was everything that was in the bunker.
Not saying it was lost, it was just, it was in there.
Okay, but, yeah, and then they put a price on it, and went to here, and we're asking FEMA to.
Okay.
The reimbursement.
That's a huge difference in time, that's a huge difference in cost.
Well, so.
The tractor at the bottom of the pond, where it's a bunker, was actually, and he took that off.
Even so, I mean, this is like, right, so, this is what we're asking for, that was in the bunker?
No, we're down here.
Oh, I see, I see.
See itemized list, see itemized. City park stores building, twenty four thousand one thirty seven dollars, itemized list of lost materials.
Okay. Okay.
You have an itemized list, well.
I was right there next to you.
That's it. I have, I have an extra one up here, I'm an extra one.
That's got two legs, it's like he likes to use them.
But. Do we wanna start and talk, go down, or we wanna?
Let's do that.
Okay.
So in Evergreen Park, it said they lost nine, one hundred and ninety foot, those six foot fence. We never lost any fences in Evergreen Park because of the flood, I just know that we were working on replacing some fences. And it just kind of got chopped in there, and this is the piece of fence from the entrance back towards the tennis court, is what he was saying. It was, it needed repair, but it was never, I don't even know if it got up there to that.
On which side?
Uh, from the entrance back towards the tennis courts in Evergreen, of all the houses, yeah.
Was it, was this already submitted to you?
I did not get.
No, that's what we're discussing, have been submitted by the twenty first, two days.
So the twenty first was just entering in our cities data as far as just our stuff, which had been done. But no list just been provided.
And then it says we put six loads, or we needed six loads of chips for the, the playground. Which we did put those chips in there, but they were a hundred and thirty five dollars a load, there was not twenty eight hundred dollars. And, and the, the seven hundred and seventy dollars for them delivered, that, I mean, I hold them all from Magnolia. To, to hire, put them in the park, we did not remove any of the old chips from the playground either, they were. They had so much mud and soap on them, we just let them dry, it's added more on top. So that's, and then, uh, town one forty, so what this list is saying is. Three thousand eight hundred sixty dollars plus the dump truck, so thirty seven hundred dollars, and what, what did we actually have? And did we fix it? Uh, it'd be six loads at a hundred and thirty five dollars a piece.
It's a huge difference.
It's basically what all we did in that playground, that's all we did in that whole park.
Okay.
Um, other than we took the garden hose and rinsed out the bathrooms and, and wiped everything down, cleaned everything.
Yeah, and that's got a, a clean bathroom, fifty two dollars for eight hours, four hundred and sixteen dollars, so that, that'd be labor.
Yeah. Um, but I'm seeing what's this new one hundred ninety foot, six foot fence and repair, the six foot fence going along, um. The exit and those houses there, where's the six foot fence? There's apparently a six foot fence there, I think it's only like a four foot fence, but they're they're wanting to replace the piece. On the left side of the entrance back towards the tennis courts. Between the property owners and us.
It was already budgeted, it was shared budget.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm looking at the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year budget, park development. Uh so you have some changes for the fiscal year, twenty five, twenty six, the park department has decreased.
It would be in park development.
Development?
Yeah.
If I read it, it's in the budget somewhere that. We were talking about replacing the the wood chips and the fencing.
It's all in park development. Uh and it should be listed out. Park development is towards the back.
If we had to have.
There'll be plans next year.
So what would be the difference of what we we actually approved, I definitely wanna make sure that. We were asking FEMA for any reimbursements we have, we don't wanna go overboard.
Yeah, I don't want.
Towards this there is fraud, we want to be honest about it, I mean, we.
I think the county had to have someone that should be for it, would qualify also. I know they were really pushing for anybody that had flood damage to report, report.
I mean, I know we did lose the chips and we did have to replace them because of the flood, but. It it cost us a little over eight hundred dollars for the six load of chips, not the three thousand.
Yeah.
Eight hundred and ten dollars plus four hundred and seventeen dollars a layer for twelve hundred and twenty five dollars. Not thirty eight hundred dollars.
But I think. We were just talking, we're just breaking time, first one using it, but. Real quick, are we finding a lot of issues with a lot of these things, or just like, was this one of the?
Oh, well, so we had, I I got highlights.
I mean, um. Yeah, if you want to go through this, fine, I think at the end probably. Want you to redo this.
Okay.
With. Would you just send this review?
Yeah, that was just entering our city information as far as the city that's done. This is now in the works, but it does not have a deadline.
Who does this go to?
It'll go into a theme like database, the final numbers.
Down at the the other park, the next year, the mill site park, five dollars bringing the same things. So two thousand eight hundred twenty dollars for wood chips, what did, what did it take to fix that?
I put four loads of wood chips in the.
About six hundred dollars to an outside, not the twenty eight hundred. And then. I. Did down at the volleyball. We never, all we ever called in the stand, through the auto wars, there's no damage to it, no. That's another one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars that. And the disc off store, we never had any party repairing or replacing any of the disc also. I don't mean like this really voluntary.
Was this, no doubt, was this, I assume this would be no doubt and not be. Nobody was even get.
We didn't, we didn't see it until.
Yeah.
Um a couple days before. He left, I believe this, because Joanna and I were put in charge of uh. Filling it all out and putting everything into the the database, basically. And I think, I think some of the things on this list are things that not only. There possibly need to be replaced, but it's not, they haven't been replaced.
Yeah, like the the Tommy parking lot. Um. We have a manhole on the edge of the creek and. For here, it's been getting eroded out of, it's not getting better, but it 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 wasn't because of the flood that it's. We have the state in it. But I mean, he's asking for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars there for.
Doing this several days.
Yeah, to replace the whole thing, do rip raps and rebuild that whole wall. You know, it's pretty much the same even now as it was before the flood, they just. Just a problem that we need to address as a city. But you're saying that they're also down on the hillside, uh they the disco court, the city has to pay money in the disco court. As far as they know, we don't have any party.
That's why they're just volunteering, all the people in the city who play there, they don't think.
But did we send our employees down there?
No.
The only thing, I guess there's an agreement between them and the city to borrow the mower and they use the tractor all too well and do some work down there with this. So he made a deal with them, cause it's showing that. Um replace baskets and. Our employee cost was three thousand seven hundred forty four dollars plus eleven hundred dollars to replace the basket, so you're just saying that. Forty eight hundred dollars was not spent down at the disco court.
Some of it wasn't spent, and I think Brandon might have told him that there was a basket that was damaged. Probably something hit it in the debris, um and so these were estimates of to be reviewed, but that, yeah, so it's not that it was spent. But I believe, I remember something mentioned about a basket down there was.
There was, there was mention that were.
Yeah.
Uprooted like all the concrete and and baskets lost, I walked in after the water went down.
So do you wanna revamp these numbers and we'll go with this a different time if there's not a deadline looming?
I think the deadline is just not. Two days from now.
No, so that that that's correct, it was what they've already input, all the city information had to be done by the twenty first. Um and you're saying that that was already done, so yeah, they're they're good.
And then did you, if you redo this, that, could you get some actual uh? Numbers from Brandon, because you know, that is in our park system. Uh that is part of our park system, and we really need to start taking care of it and putting some money into it. If we're gonna maintain it, if we're gonna keep that as a feature of our city, we need to start putting some money into it.
Yeah, there was damage done down there, they thought of the money, we we need to ask people to replace it. But we don't wanna ask them to replace something that wasn't damaged.
There's no point in going over this if the numbers aren't accurate.
Right, well, I think that's the product of the number of managers, he's asking us what. That one thing, what do you want us to do about it, the city council, where do you want us?
Yeah, uh yeah, we wanna. We wanna bounce something to the territory, so yeah, I really like that thought out. Hopefully.
And especially on that bumper.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um. Your motion just got a. Let us know if there's an, being obviously a deadline, I'm trying to next council, I mean, next council. Bring out updated report. And what else, is there anything else that needs to be submitted for this FEMA, this is, there is. Wait, I mean, you know that is.
Yeah, once they open it up, we'll work with each um city has a FEMA representative that will walk them through entering everything into the system.
Are we expected to get a hundred percent of what we submit?
It's a seventy percent reimbursement for losses.
Now, is. Mill spring it out, completely be redone, I don't believe so, I believe where that water came up, there's maybe like a six by six or a ten by ten area that it. It broke the.
That's where the gravel is.
Cause I went through there the other day, a couple of hours, it's about the size of that. That that's where it got broke up during the flood, and I I think it was the road up that we needed to do a two inch overlay for a hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
If it's needed and it's damaged, let's put it in, but if it wasn't damaged, that's, that's all. That's kinda how I, that's why I wanted to bring that to you guys to just to see where you, what you guys learned, but. We can input everything that's there and go with it, if we can redo it and try to get a little more more accurate. Definitely on the stuff that we know we didn't spend money on or or not anticipating. Now, all the parks had to be reseeded, we did not do any reseeding. But we do receive, I think we bought one, one bag of seed, one twenty five pound bag of seed. And I believe it's still sitting in the shop. Still didn't receive, no.
So he's supposed to go with that and bring us the numbers of what actually happened was spent.
Alright. Alright, moving on, police department side manager with rehabilitation grant.
Thank you, council, uh so this was something that I discussed back um with council back, I think within April or May of this year. And it was just something that we were approached by this company and if we'd be interested in the seismic grant. Uh the grants, I believe for the two point two, two point three million is the max that the city could be up for the. Reservation of the police department side only, like I explained, is to basically get it up to uh. You know, to try to withstand earthquake and stuff like that, um it's kind of a remodel of the entire police department, it's where we get the whole, full amount. The city's cost uh would be five thousand dollars if we obtained the grant. Um if we did obtain the grant, then there would be no cost to the city. Uh so we discussed this, um or I just kind of presented it to you without this hit, um there was no discussion between council, there was no vote or anything like that. The the company reached out, they sent the contract out, Lonnie had signed the contract on July fourteenth of this year. Um I was CC'd in an email and um. Just before he left, uh Brian is a gentleman, uh this company has no contact with him, he told Brian that I would be the lead on this. Um did a little dig in and like I said, uh you all didn't discuss it, pick a vote or anything like that, so I would have presented it to you. To see if this is something that council wants to move forward with, because this is a very big project. Uh or if this is something that council interests in, um so. But the thing was, if council wants to move forward with this, we're gonna move forward, uh with this current contract, uh when it's signed or when. You can, we can have to want another contract, it would basically be the same, same contract, but. I just wanted to give that, that option to you guys tonight.
How's that gonna look doing just that half when it's attached to this?
Well, the only thing I think is going to change on the outside structure would be we would have new windows. In that side of the building, so um. From my understanding, like the the rental fire department, they did it, so they painted it. Um they got new windows, other than that, the outside, you really don't no- notice anything um with the structure on the outside. Um what you notice is the inside, that's what really changes. Um because reason that the inside changes so much, because anytime that they have to go through. And go through the ceiling or the floor, the walls, that all gets redone, so you get new ceiling, new walls and flooring, things like that, so. That's really where the makeover comes, is on the inside of the structure. Uh if you're talking about some painted windows that you was gonna have outside.
But they put like. Additional structure. Just on the place. Side of this building that will withstand an earthquake.
Yeah, so it's for the walls, the ceilings to not crumble if earthquake happens, yeah. So I'm not an engineer, I'm not sure how they go through the the walls with what type of systems they do and the roofs and and stuff like that, but that's, that's what they're doing.
And what determines whether you get that grant or?
I think the state, but but what's what's gonna determine that, so so they look at. They're gonna look at the. When the building was built, how was it built, um Joanna was able to find all the blueprints except the drawings, so. They came down, they took pictures of the building, the inside, took pictures of all the blueprints and stuff like that. Um the gentleman, when he reached out to us from this company, he said they've been doing this like three, twelve or thirteen years. And he said they don't reach out unless they're almost a hundred percent sure they're gonna get the grant. Um he said, you can basically tell by looking at the the building from Google and driving by it, that it was gonna qualify for the grant. Uh but again, there's no guarantees, but the grant, it it would be submitted um in this early fall and then. The findings come out, I believe in February or March of twenty six. If if we receive it.
Is there any kind of matching fund stuff?
So it's five thousand dollars. So. Only if we get the grant, if we don't get the grant and that's in the contract, then there's, there's no cost to the city. Um you always have to think though, it's it's two point two or two point three million dollars. Um you always have to think, sometimes there may be. Things, and I don't say it costs, but you know, there's two point three million dollars and. You know, we weren't able to finish this room, so you know, there's fifty thousand dollars, it still needs to be, they completely finished it. I I've seen that's gonna be the case, but that's always a potential, anytime they can do a construction job, that the cost could come in higher than. You know, the original bid or whatever.
I had noticed, but I assumed there was no like, yeah, there's no like estimate on their end that. For that cost, so they they don't know, and are we guaranteed like? Is it two point two, two point three, are we? Is that just like, we get that much or nothing at all type thing, is that how it is?
No, I I think that's what they shoot for, they try to get the two point two or two point three, I think. The state can say you can, you know, we're only gonna give you five hundred thousand or a million dollars or whatever. Five hundred grand, so when the. The lady came down and took the pictures and stuff, she said she'd be reaching out and they basically want a list of. You know, how many people occupy the building, is it occupied twenty four hours, what are the assets that we have in the building, so they take all those things into an account. Um to to what they project, how much money they're gonna give. The person's requesting the grants.
So you just. You just are wanting to know if we need to sign another one of these or this one's gonna be.
Well, we need to motion to actually pull it to.
I think, Kyle, you've given this pull over, I think where the question's gonna get right is. We talked about it, we're not positive, I did, never said yes, let's proceed, and then all of a sudden, you're finds out that. There's a signed contract without. City council approval that came on July fourteenth. The day before he resigned, the day before we had a city council meeting, might have been that way to the fifteenth, I think. So you're just, you're just asking, we wanna accept this contract or we want?
Yeah, do you wanna accept the contract, is council in support of us moving forward with this project and trying to get the grant, and to get the grant? Then doing the seismic uh on the building, or is this something the council is helping to do forward? So what I can tell you is that building is entirely need, a big lot of work. And so if if we don't get it out of the grant, we're gonna have to figure out some other way. That that building's gonna have to be updated and restored.
Maybe some of them.
To go that route, then the next year, the they're gonna move the police department over to get. Question to you, you made a comment earlier. So like, oh, they could maybe only just give us a grant for five hundred thousand dollars, well, that could take, you know. Say it costs one point five, two million dollars and we do what we need to bring down. Say we're offered that grant for only five hundred thousand dollars. Like, was, like, then we have a whole other discussion, because one, we just got under the grass, we had to pay these people five thousand dollars. And then we're not going to get enough money to be able to do what we need to do, so we're having us. Yeah, we're in a big.
Do you have that option, so, do you have the option to reject the grant if it's not the amount that you?
You have to pay the five thousand dollars if you get the.
Yeah.
And like you said, nothing guaranteed.
Yeah.
Uh when we had the zoom with Brian and we could talk, you know. They're reaching out to places where they believe they're gonna get the full extent of the grant, I think this company's in there to make money. And they're, they're trying to get folks to apply for these grants where they're gonna make money. Um and and to make their most money, but again, there's no guarantees, I can't say we're gonna get the grant, it's gonna be for the full amount.
Yeah, I mean, with that said, I think. Uh yeah, that you guys wanna, whether you wanna decide for what step it, I find when it is for the sign.
I think from talking with them is is basically what I got is. You get the grant, basically, he said you make your wish list, right, I want to have this done to the building. And then they bring you back to reality and say, well, this is what you got, this is what we can do with what you got. Uh that was kind of the understanding for the discussion that I got with the meeting.
And I am for for years, you know, that we're. Supposed to have the big one, the big one, and then. Since I moved up uh to work and they're talking about a really big one, you know, so. Um. Yeah, I I don't know, I think it would. I think it would be that idea, actually.
I make the motion that we go ahead with this five thousand, I mean, you know, this.
The contract.
A contract that was signed. To apply for this grant.
I started on motion.
And. Yeah, you have a discussion.
The only discussion, I would say, is like, we're, we're trying to decide, do we want to just accept the same one, or do we want to? Accept the same contract, but you didn't put a different name on it since he's no longer here, does it matter? I think that you're the contact person and, and he.
I do feel more comfortable with the, with our, either interim or the, the chief's name on the, on the contract.
Oh, I don't know why it would matter, given the dates of it. He was employed as the city administrator. On that day.
Yeah.
So, he, whatever you guys feel, council.
That's not the point, that's the point that he did.
Right.
He didn't have to prove himself. The contract flows, me reasonable, I mean, he was anyways. I mean, do you want something more s- some specific stated?
We, we can keep going from five hundred thousand to two point, uh, one point three, two point three million. I'd like to see something more concrete than.
That's, that's number, that, that's just a number I'm throwing out here. So there's no five hundred amounts with this contract that.
Yeah, I know, I, I just do there.
Right, the, the amount, the max amount is, it's either two point two or two point three million. The max, it's not the max amount, and then that's what they go after, and that's generally what they, what they give. I, I'm just saying that there's nothing written in stone, is if we're to receive the grant, that we're going to give the.
Get two point three million.
I'd say I would like to continue this grant, but change the amount to where it's been approved by the city council. That's whoever's gonna be the new signee since this wasn't approved.
So would that be exact, be the new signee?
Do we need to adjust that motion to, well?
Then I have to resent my motion.
Resent, resent this again, resent the motion.
Okay, so. Resent your. I'll resent my motion.
Sign new contract and having it a grant more Friday?
Make another motion to accept or move forward with this grant proposal. Uh, with the city council's approval this time.
See, answer that question, not that we're, I'll reach out to Brian to, tomorrow to make sure, uh, I don't believe so, just because. The grant doesn't have to be submitted until, I think, September or October, uh, which is, they're, they're doing all the labor, better than I'm gonna have to compile a. A list of, you know. Basically what our assets are in the building and stuff like that, but this company will do it all the way first, so.
Joanna, do you need more clarification on my motion?
No.
My second.
So you second, alright, alright, any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. Um, memorandum of understanding, page number three, five, running fine. Uh, I think, I'm not sure if something was supposed to talk, talk about this, but it looks like this is what we just had asked them to provide to us last. For council, and is the information, any questions on what they provided us?
Yeah, I did. Um. Notice on, uh, number three. Uh, the site control of the village, they want us to give them absolute, complete. Control of the designated area. But he hasn't. By asking where the designated area, we don't know where the designated area is, I don't know how we can sign something like that, um, giving him. They control of something, we don't know what it is.
And then he shows us some of the.
He shows his diagram of flower beds and everything, we're, because.
I think it's a wording thing I need to correct, uh, uh.
What do we need to clarify, what area it is talking about? If I went down there and today.
What it means, I'm, what area is site control? Site control, like, we need to, obviously, we still want, we, we still have control, but he doesn't have full control. I guess maybe that's a clarification.
Yeah, I don't think a city should ever give, like, full control over an area that a city owns.
Their main concern is spraying.
Right.
They don't wanna put in their garden and then have it poisoned spray.
Right, so that's, that's the purpose.
That's that.
Yeah, he mentions that, but that's, and they want thirty days advance notice before the city plans on doing it. So if you just need clarification, I'm sure that can be negotiated.
I want clarification on what area he's talking about, because there, there's right now, we have fifteen gravel pathways. Going through there, and we have existing flower beds going through there. Are they wanting to redo all those flower beds, or they just want that space in the middle?
No, there's the moon tree, he, he gave us a diagram.
I feel like the, I feel like this proportioned to that diagram.
Right.
And I feel like that first point should just be taken away.
We have flower beds, we're, the parking lot, uh, both far left to the pool, we have a ten foot flower bed and trees all across. Edge of the parking lot, and then all the way up to the pavilion. And then on the other side of that, ten foot flower bed, we have four foot gravel walking the goes. All the way in front of the library, up to Tom Avenue, across the flower bed, and back up to the, uh. Pavilion, that's what I, I don't understand, wh- what area did they wanna establish and keep us out? Is it just the grass area, or are they gonna take over the, the paths?
Okay, well, there's nobody here that's representing or willing to answer any of those questions, so do you want to table this, or what do we, what do we? To get them.
We seem to push back with questions and just the concerns, so I think one. From down here, you say like, we need to, we need to find.
Clarification.
Define the boundary, and then we need to either take out or somehow redefine at one point. The granting of full site control, I think is kind of a concern. I think defining what that, what they, what their, maybe.
Right.
And then, anything else?
It's the time to figure on number four.
Yeah, I think he's.
Number four is why we're. Um, they require the city to provide a thirty day written notice to them. Any plant activity.
That may affect the learning garden.
Think somebody should tell the city, you can't come on your own property.
I saw that, I saw that too, cause like, one, especially if in a, in a emergency type of situation.
Well, I, you know.
We're not gonna be getting, we're not gonna be taking into this.
I don't think that's their concern at all, their biggest concern is, uh, spraying.
Yeah, I, I thought about that too, I think you thought about that.
Noticed in the, it's mowing and spraying, it's their concerns.
Right, and I think that.
That may affect the learning garden, including, not limited to sewer work, ground maintenance.
That's important.
They don't want.
The voiding spray, I can, I can see letting, uh, some notice, but not when we're talking damage structure related projects. I mean, you know, do we have, will we have a warning that thirty days is exceeded?
Yeah. And especially if it's something that we has to be done, and we have to, we have to get done in a completion, or that kind of thing, it's just something that's.
Would it work to get a second, uh, move our forms, if the city shall accordings of. Them to minimize disruption of the learning garden center, that should.
Absolutely, yes, cause I know that that's what sunk this before with Unleashed, is that they. You know, don't wanna put a bunch of work in and then have the city come in and go ahead and spray it after they. Over weeks have done everything they needed to do to make it conducive to the bees, so, um.
Were they to fall apart last time?
Man, I don't see.
The city didn't communicate, they didn't, they kept going in and spraying and stuff like that, so it just wasn't working. So we just need to have him come back in and clarify or go over this, but he's not here right now.
Right, I'd like to see the site where it says, this is where we propose doing it, and this is where. They're saying that we have no control.
Site diagram to scale.
Right.
I'd like to see just scale, because, you know, you can put it out there, they draw it out on a napkin, it might, it's a little bit different than say.
Right.
Fifteen feet here and twenty feet there, you know.
Right, I know the moon tree was like in the middle, and it's not very far away from Light Prairie. So it's not like a huge area, but we need more clarification to do anything with this. So do we need to make a bunch of the table?
No, we're just asking, just asking.
Yeah, no, we're just asking to connect.
Okay.
Here's some questions. I think, yeah, I think if I were the good idea for that, gentlemen, they're being here for this. Uh, moving on, intergovernmental agreements, LCOG.
Uh, and with the.
I'm actually not prepared on the planning.
Yeah.
Just for the planning?
Yes.
I, I'm not sure, I, I mean.
I have real issues with the, some of the cost of this, I think it's a bit ridiculous.
I feel like the cost is way overstated.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know, but I had a conversation with the administrator of Winston, he was kind of reached out, I think. I think it was you that.
Yeah, he told me, and, uh, he felt like he needed to discuss something with me, whatever, that's fine, and then he asked for his own.
Yeah, which is great, I, I had a good conversation with him, and he had mentioned, um, that their planner had. Lot of downtime, not downtime, I'm not sure he's looking fine, but, but he had the opportunity to be able to maybe contract with their planner to be able to come in. Cause I guess that's one of my questions I had when I was done with, that need as a planner. Like, is that a huge need, is that something that we are needing constantly, and we, it's not, right, it's not huge?
We have three or four pending questions already asking us.
So we need something to find a way, but on a, on a going basis, what is that?
And those, those costs on there are less than what we charge to the customer. So, so you guys charged more than that to do planning?
Yes.
That's good and done.
So Winston, though, they have a planner that.
Well, I don't know, I look, I, I.
Have that conversation with the.
I think the cost.
Winston, get a cost analysis.
Uh, he had offered, uh, he had a, he had availability to be contracted to, you know, that's if we.
And, and they would have a better handle on what is.
So what this would be, I think.
Cause any of these small cities don't need a full-time planner, now that's what we used to do through the county, and then they said we won't help you.
So Elkhog also coordinates with like Yonkala, North Douglas, a bunch of other small cities around here.
Sure.
Um, he said that he's more than willing to zoom with us, answer questions, he can come down and meet with people if they need it. Um, and I, this is just what I've heard around town about the Winston, from a current person that is a. Does a lot of instructions, I've been scouting, that they're, they're very hard to deal with, very hard to work with.
Uh, as far as what?
Being like a construction person, trying to get answers from somebody like the back and forth, right?
So I, I own the zoning and the regulations and the ROI.
Yeah, cool, I know that we've contacted with Elkhog in the past, I wasn't here, Joanna was, correct? Um, so we've worked with them in the past, and it's a, a pretty easy back and forth.
And it's not a contract, um, this is an agreement for those prices, but it's just an as needed, it's only charged when we.
Right, sure, sure, so that, yeah, so I'm thinking, if, if the price is a little bit high per hour, but if we're charging the.
The homeowner or the builder more than that. It's a wash, but if we go and hire Winston and split with them and say, okay, we're gonna have your employee, we'll pay him twenty hours a week. And you pay him twenty hours a week, that's a.
One of the, I never looked that up, I wasn't thinking.
No, we're similar, no, neither was, I was saying contracted by the hour.
Yeah.
But.
They contacted.
So that they're planning, they're right here, I'm someone here. Huh?
Because their, their planners, their manager now.
Oh, the other guy who moved up to manager, okay.
So then, so you guys are intent, that if we just needed their planner, we can call them to come down? Just for what, that's all we're paying him for, we're not taking on his, half of his salary and his benefits?
That was not my understanding.
Yeah, that, that's the way I was looking at it.
I was thinking something to this, like, it would just be an hourly budget.
Yeah, exactly, but, but contacts matter, I think.
Wouldn't take much for me to call and ask me what they were offering, and if they had something written up that we could look at.
Yeah, that would be a good place to start, but otherwise.
But in the meantime, since this is just a per item. Agreement, it would be nice to have something in place that we can start getting phone calls handled now.
Maybe have a contract now.
Yeah.
We can, we can, we can vote, I guess, we can have a contract, if they have not contracted, we can have this going.
And.
We, we made a motion, they may maybe accept this, and then it could be, if we can talk to Winston.
Cause it's not a contract, we terminated.
Right.
If we decide that, you know, they're not helping us, the time is, we need it, we just, we have that.
This could be our interim for this. Your plan, you, this is, do we need a motion?
Yeah, I hear that, it sounds good, yes.
I'm making a motion that we contract with the Elkhog for an interim planner. Until we have more information to decide whether we might do it permanently or.
Before we start with that, let me clarify that one word in there, because we're not combating with them.
Right, oh.
Just enter into the.
I've been reading.
Enter, absolutely, make a motion, we enter into an agreement as an.
No, sorry.
Uh, any other discussion, prior vote? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. Um, seven point six, part-time parks employment offered.
So Monday, the eleventh and of August, and the twelfth of August, Jonathan, Leslie and I did interviews, and. It came down to three candidates, and I think we decided to go with, um, the gentleman. And then, I don't know, you guys want names, what do you guys wanna know?
Well, I think all we, uh, as a council, all we really need to do is if you're happy with it, all we need to do is authorize you the right to hire that personnel.
Okay.
We, we shouldn't be involved in the naming and any of that stuff at all, that's not what we're here for.
We have to take that.
I'm making a motion that we authorize the, uh, our interim city administrator to hire a parks employee.
I second that.
Alright, you have a discussion, prior vote? Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion carries. Uh, seven point seven, charter amendments. Um, I know that they're gonna be pushed out, but any, any comments on this?
Well, we'll, we'll need to sit down and actually do the, and somebody said something about doing another board session. But we need to sit down and actually write out what, how we want that record and read and what we want in it. And when we're doing it, we should probably just take a look at the entire charter, so we can, and not just. Hit one thing and then have to go back another year to another, we should take a look at the charter and make sure that it's all. Up to date and not as antiquated or as, as it has been for some time, I mean, we didn't.
We could set up like a workday meeting, where we discuss the charters at full, I mean, just like.
And I would suggest instead of using the work, work session that you use, um, a special session, because if it's a special session or a special meeting. You can make decisions and motions and everything.
Yeah, okay, further.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother, special session.
Yeah, it's very special.
Yeah, I did have, uh, I was reading. Um, I mean, it's, yeah, obviously this is pushed out, but one of the things that I noticed that we could add to the charter. Maybe in this case, when it came to like, you know, the, the radius of our, you know, news and administration, or it could be used for other things too, is. Um, we could put in there opportunities for the council to, to have waivers. And so I'm wondering, like, maybe think about that wording a little bit too, so like, we had something in there restricting. A, you know, a, a city administrator living inside the city limits, but the city council has an opportunity to waive that, or some of those lines, some kind of wording with that. Uh, to allow us that discretion and be able to make that.
Right, flexibility.
Flexibility, so that we're not restricted to something, that could be used, and so like.
You can use that in several instances.
Yeah, or, or like, cause let's say we, um, we offered, you know, somebody who had, they need to live within twenty minutes or something, we just say that was part of our charter. But this guy found a place in, or, oh, man, sorry, um, who lived, you know, twenty-five minutes away, like. We can, we can do a waiver to allow that, and not have to like, be, you know. That, that is enough wording that I think would be important for us to kind of look at, and maybe for the charter, so.
I think maybe on that wording, more, more, either, but Cliff, church after the last meeting, he said, and he probably know about this, I mean, that. The ways who are all those guys that are on call for emergencies, he said there, it's already in their contract, that they have people to live thirty minutes response time. So, I mean, that may be, may something that we wanna go off of, if we're gonna go that route on, then. On, your city, city administrator, it's, you know, so it's straight across the board as far as all city positions that. Yeah, maybe within a thirty minute radius, it'd spawn, so when do we want to leave?
Yeah.
I'll do the wrong, I'm available any time.
Not, not, not visiting, I'm not.
Right, I have a question on that, you're talking about like all city positions, so would that be all city positions to? No, on a, on a, on call response, or, you know, cause I, I, I may have a current employee right now, when he lives in Sutherland, I don't know. You know, what area of Sutherland? You know, because I, I, I may have a current employee right now, who lives in Sutherland, I don't know, you know, what area of Sutherland he lives in, but I, it could be more than thirty minutes. So if they're already pre-existing employee, you know, he told me the other day that. If it's not traffic, he made it to work, what was it, twenty-eight minutes? There we go. And I did the math, it's like he may have been fudging the speed limit a little bit. Oh, yeah, I gotta check that living Sutherland out as much as food there.
That's.
So I have another one, I, I don't know what part of town he lives on.
I made it in that timeframe too.
So I would need by pushing it.
Yeah.
Change the charter on that. If, if they're already a free employee, would they be grandfathered in?
No, it doesn't, that's paid to all employees, but.
This is literally.
But I thought he said like, would it be in the charter?
That only part of the, that's part of the contract policy, right?
But I, I thought I heard him say, maybe I just misunderstood it, but I, I thought he said something about all employees. If that would be changed in the charter, that's why I brought up a question.
I think the ones that are contracted to be within that certain time.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, that's my, my question, because I.
Yeah, I'm sure it is. And I don't even know who, who it is, that would probably be whoever's in charge of the water, whoever's in charge of the wastewater and then probably. Except public works, because on the emergencies they have to.
Myself down there.
Yourself, you're within that thirty minutes.
Sergeant, yeah.
Some things like the on-call policy and stuff like that can be an in-house agreement without being part of the charter that has to go into a mode.
Maybe. Because if it's an ordinance, we can change an ordinance, we just can't change a charter.
So we think so, temper.
For the meetings?
Yeah.
I don't know. Somebody throw something.
It sounded like. Something goes faster than later, I assume.
Yeah, the sooner the better.
Yeah, sooner, that way we can get, we can get the job description out there and start receiving some, uh, some resumes and stuff.
And Thursday is where it's pretty long.
Yeah, Thursday work for me.
Yes, Thursday.
We talking, we're not talking.
No, not this Thursday, but.
The next Thursday.
Yeah, what's your name?
What's the date on that?
Thursday, September fourth, the fourth at nine.
Maybe we could even do it sooner than that.
Or the twenty, sign the twenty eighth.
Yeah, because we're getting in the Labor Day weekend there. Too.
Well, Wednesday, I'd rather do it before our next city council meeting and.
The next city council meeting is the second.
So the twenty eighth of this month, which is next Thursday?
Twenty eighth is five with me.
On the twenty eighth, okay. At the, at five thirty.
This will be a special session. Um. Homer would be just, you know, reading charter, yeah, kind of a question, maybe the suggestion to the home? Yeah.
Well, beautiful.
Can we have, we try to this probably online?
Yeah, you can.
Fine.
All right, we are moving on.
Double sided.
City administrator report.
So I got a couple of things. So you asked me to, that's research on this subdivision, I assume you're talking about Andrew Schircliff subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I think right now that's currently just both been put on hold there in the middle of litigation between Knight River and the Landowner. That's last I knew, that was a couple of months ago.
Really, you're sitting that way?
Actually, I talked to him in the post office yesterday, and as he pointed, yeah, there's still in court and it's just gonna keep going, but.
Whatever, and you know, the reason, what was the reason?
That, uh, a lot of it was installed improperly.
By Knight River?
By Knight River. That's, well, that's from his. I'm not saying one way or the other, but that, that's his argument. So it's, it's not gonna be coming to, uh, doing anything ever out while that, so.
Yeah.
That's too bad, as much work as they've put in there.
Yeah.
To have it shut down.
Yeah, yeah, Andrew wants to get it going, wants to get it done, so.
So then I got, um, it looks like in July twenty, on July twenty first, he received, Molly received some information from Dyer. I was very good about your guys' footbridge, across from Evergreen to the riverside, and it looks like the bid on that or the total estimate was six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, forty-seven thousand dollars. There, okay. So I guess there's, I don't know, yeah, I don't think that's gonna pass.
What about park grants?
Yeah, that's.
There's lottery money that is available for that type of a project?
I, we, I basically just picked this up off of his desk and I was like, I should probably tell him what's, that's kind of where.
So we met with Dyer on two days ago and he did say that they had looked at like the structuring again and yada, yada, yada. And they said there is such a drop on one side of the river, I think that's.
It's on the upper side, yeah.
Uh, that it would have to, it would have to be raised up. A lot, and then also has to be ADA accessible, so that you don't have to have a ramp that's seventeen to twenty something feet long also that comes off of it. So he said that's another thing that the city would have to take into consideration is.
It does.
The grand, yeah, grand scheme of.
It does have to also have to be higher than under your blood point two, probably more lands on the gated arc side.
They expressed they did not like the feasibility of it for the location.
Yeah. What was the, what was the amount of, I mean, I mean, thousand or something?
Six hundred and forty-seven thousand, first.
Six hundred and twenty.
I did under.
To, to completely, completely. Did complete the project?
That's their estimate.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
Can I, can I?
Type off on that one? Yeah, so, uh, one thing that Zach and I will talk about after looking at, because a lot of the times we never got to see some of these things, um, is that. Just to have them do their engineering guesstimates and everything, that's costing the city about twenty-five hundred dollars per time that Dyer does this.
Really? So that's just twenty-eight, thirty-seven is what they charge to.
Yeah, so for something that we're not.
Insane.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, for something to think about next time, that'd be.
Yeah.
Well, it would just really be a nice thing for the people that live over there, to be able to access the park somehow. If ever there's another couple of bridge or something for sale.
Yeah, yeah.
And I guess my last thing is, uh, yesterday I come into an email. How the lady wants an information to finish a grant that.
What, a grant?
It's a forgivable.
It's a hundred percent forgivable loan.
What is the difference between that and a grant?
A loan or what?
Are you saying, uh, to finish the completion of it, like you started?
It was started, it was, it sounds like this piece of paper that she needed to fill out was, was her finishing touch of this grant.
So what I have, what I have drummed up is if you scroll to the back of this packet, it was signed by Matt on nine fifteen of twenty-three. So this is a little, a little bit ago, nine fifteen of twenty-three. So I was trying to find something in the minutes saying, you know, to show you guys that. You guys approved it, you know, knew about it. The only thing I could find, so Matt signed it on nine fifteen of twenty-three. On nine nineteen of twenty-three, it was mentioned, um, in the administrative report that, uh. The state is offering a forgivable loan, so.
But that dates after.
It's mine.
What was it for?
Uh, one point three million dollars to deal with.
What was it do, probably had to do.
A rack wash upgrade, so it'll automate our rack wash system for our water. Right now, you guys said go down there, we got a diesel power generator restarted, so you've got a bunch of problems that have been putting closed. And it's, it's all manual and this will give us air activated valves and air actually, I like the current pressure down there. And this, it's what I understand that they're doing after meeting with Dyer yesterday.
And. Is this something that? Like we would like to have?
It's in our master plan to get it done. Um, it's almost like. That is, so with this help, that would be.
Well, this would be something that we would pay for and then.
That's the thing is, uh, I tried calling the lady today and left a message, because I don't know any of the specifics on how it's paid back or, you know, how it works. Yeah, there is on page five, it does say. Uh, so it says the business. Funds basically is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it says other funds, so it is mentioned in here that our funds are fifty thousand dollars that we're putting into it. But I just wanna note that there is nothing in the budget, in the budget that we have currently that states that we're going to receive this. Loan or grant, and there's no, there's fifty, there's no fifty thousand dollars that is allocated to this.
So this is an email that you got?
Yes. Right, we came into Lonnie yesterday morning and then I, I got it and I called to figure out what exactly it was. And then I, we started asking questions of these ladies to figure out who, if anybody, where is this grant?
So are you gonna follow up on this and see what you can find out?
We're currently working on filling out the paperwork and, um, well, we tried calling her today to get more information on the loan and what our portion of the loan would be and.
And the time span of how long we have to build this.
Because that is twenty, twenty-three.
Right, yeah.
Well, but it just got approved already, I guess. The, the final touches on it being approved are being filled out right now, so.
Okay.
Yes.
So it's not like it's past due or been forgotten or anything, it's just, it's, it's.
I think it was a long process to, uh-huh, yeah.
Right.
So you're just recording this and?
Well, it's never been approved for by the, by, by the coun, by the council.
That we're aware of, that we can find.
Uh, I searched minutes from the beginning of twenty-three to current and, um.
So this is something that we need to put on the next agenda?
Um, well, it was, once again, it's already, it was, it was already signed before it was approved, so I think the same thing that you did with Brewster, you said you would like us to. Follow up with it and continue it.
So it sounds like we need a motion to just, just to solidify. How do you guys feel about it? One, that's really, is this something that you want? Uh, two, I guess we apply, are we forced to move on with it, because we just said, I guess maybe we need to do one of it.
I think it sounds like a good thing to do, it's just the proper procedure wasn't followed, so I would like to make a motion that we, uh. Move ahead with this. At loan. Using the proper procedure at this point.
One second.
One second.
Question. This is for the freshwater, right, the drinking water system? Where are we going to give fifty thousand dollars from?
Yeah, that's probably my question. So that's the thing, I. I'm gonna pull this back.
There is, there is money in, uh, the reserves, we would have to do a budget adjustment.
Right.
Make a line item, you know, it would be, once again, another process we'd have to come to council to figure out. But I want, I need to get some answers from, uh, this lady at Business Org to figure out.
Yeah.
What it is, yeah, but not have all the rules and regulations yet.
Get, get up to speed on it and everything first and then.
So we're just going through the motions of getting it in the, uh, shoot, the way it should have gone in the shoot. Um, but water is important and I've always been really proud of the fact that we are on top of that. And we don't have the issues that a lot of cities do. So this is just one more thing that's providing life to the city of Murthreek.
Well, we've already signed this and we're already, according to this, we're already obligated, it says right there, you can finish your fifty thousand dollars.
Well, now we're just.
Thank you for letting us know. So is that, so we're, we're at the second, we're, I guess, oh yeah, we're, we're starting for the, but we, we need formal approval? Yeah, so any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Who's name? Here it is.
Um.
Next.
I mean, I guess I'm not, I pulled my, my, uh, reservation off of the LLC conference. I just, it's so early and what I'm doing here, I didn't feel like it, it was out of the air.
More important, yeah.
But I'm not gonna go with that. Maybe if we were like three months in or something, it would be different, but.
We tell people all the time with the different points.
Yeah, I mean, and then I still got all my job duties as superintendent, I gotta.
That's good to hear.
Being down for a whole week would be. Uh, a lot.
Yeah, that would be devastating.
Who is on?
I don't.
You and I gotta figure out to. Transportation.
We have an electric car in there.
Yeah, yeah, I really will make it for one, so I don't know, it's good, it's good, I don't know, I think I would expect, yes.
It should maybe for one, and even if it does, there's so many options, Steve.
Maybe the for one, right?
It's maybe to stay along with, I think, I wanna say the teens.
Teens?
And the teen, I bet, I don't have a problem, I've got every gap who that you can tap.
And you know how to do it.
Yes, I am not afraid.
I, I, that remind me on that.
I think like a vehicle, did we ever, I recommend to get a charger so we know.
We have.
Okay, I think that'd be a good idea, so we know how much electricity the vehicle is using and how far we can get on a charge.
Like a, a meter, like a meter on that?
And they were, they were only several hundred dollars, you can get a meter and then you put the meter in between. The car and where you're plugging in and it, it tells you all that stuff.
Information is what people need.
Right.
Yes, they care if you know.
I think right now, every vehicle that we own, the gas, you guys have to put down your mileage and tell them how much. Uh, you have to put in it and you're just, you're tracking.
Yes, it's the public vehicle, it needs to be tracked. Everything we go to, we get fuel card.
Don't, don't get tracking through our, uh, the charger that we have out there, it doesn't.
It's going to city hall and like.
It just goes into the city hall.
Yeah, public buildings.
Okay, okay.
But we, you know.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
They'll specify what, what that vehicle is using.
Yeah, it would be nice, though, but.
All right, mayor and counselor. Reports, Bob. Chair.
I do have a speech to do with it, I'll talk to you out of. But I'm not, really.
Yeah, I guess, um, Bob had mentioned last meeting that we, he was questioning the funds for. The Matt and Murthreek, that whole process and I, I, uh, don't know how you guys feel about, I'm, my only concern is, uh. What do, what do we get?
And. Yeah, so I actually requested that from Joanna just the other day, that to have the guy who was managing it on the, uh, what's the company calling it?
Lotus Media.
Lotus Media.
He will be here on.
She's gonna come in on the second and give us an update on just what has happened, because really our only update. Over the last several months, it's been from Lonnie and I'm not sure, uh, that'd be great to get an update on what's going on there, I passed Leslie. Um. Just have something, you know, so just, um, cause why, I don't think, I don't think it might be set up, but like just, there's nothing honestly to do like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's right.
But you were gonna put the draw box on it, she put it in her draw box, so we'll be able to look at that, that contract.
Yeah.
Then you're, you're locked up.
Okay, yeah, there should be a balance, it says here seventy-five hundred was left in the account, so I don't want that's still the case or.
If that might have been suspended, because I don't know, that thing passed out two weeks ago, nine point five showed the damage, it's suspended, where is that?
He, that was just our, um, duties as far as who was taking on what and it was just recommended. Lonnie had just said, why don't you wait till there's a new city administrator to move forward, back, all back.
Okay, the data and stuff that they got from that survey.
Do we have the data? Cause I know.
I think he was in the pro, Kurtin was in the process of putting that together, so maybe that's what he, he and us run the surveys that are hanging.
I'll keep talking in a second. They have.
Um, the library got a grant and they do three copies.
I saw that.
Yeah, because he's city clerk, I'm city, you're that, no?
Uh, I don't think so, just anybody, because.
Sounds like they didn't, it needs to be like.
No, and, and that was one of the things, you know, when people are coming to an area and they don't have a printer and they need to fill out a rental application or something, having. The library as an option and now having it free for the copies is a tremendous. For the copies is a tremendous asset to anybody who's trying to.
How, how that may communicate, uh.
I just threw me, I, I was there and asked if they had anything for the council and they told me that was. I don't know, but the copies were only like a quarter, so I couldn't, I imagine the grant wouldn't even have to be that big to make a big difference, you know. I mean, to be able to just get free copies.
They did put it out on social media. And they offered it even to small businesses.
Nice. Yes, they got a printer with the grant, so they have two printers. And, uh, they're gonna be doing the song disco in October. So that's ways out, but that guy, he was on vacation, the one that we need to talk to. Cause there was some else too, but I'm very, there's no point bringing that, he's not here.
Uh, yeah, first of all, I just want, uh. Say kudos to Joanna, I've been, since I've been on, I was told, me and Kathy Purdy come on. Check in everything, read the minutes, look at other cities, how they do stuff, and I've been looking at other cities, uh, minutes, agendas. And you go to Murphreek, everything is within one or two days of our meeting, she has posted, um, it's chronological order. You get on our website, you can follow everything that's going on, uh, you go to some of these other cities and they're. In that, keep violation of the, the rule, because they'll post up for two or three months on their minutes and so you'd never know. The community doesn't know what's going on in the city council meetings, and I think that's one thing that we wanna do, is city council be transparent, let everybody involved. And so Joanna, that's a great job of getting the information out after our meetings, so.
She's a huge asset, she's got her micker on pulse of.
Yes.
Everything she needs. Sometimes she gets off to weather, it's not because she's not busy doing.
And the other other things, I know we, we ask every couple of months and what? Do we have any updates on our visitor center, cause I know last time Kathy asked.
It's in the urban door. If you wanna look at it, it's no, it just, I mean, we were told it's gonna be down in the middle of June. And now we're in the middle of August, so something is gonna be presented tonight?
Yes. Uh, yeah, that's what I was gonna ask, but, uh, wait, uh, I haven't been filmed.
Oh, I wanted to go over the time.
What is your clock, son?
Mine says seven forty-one.
It says seven forty-two.
Which one?
The one that we go off of.
Right, and that one says seven forty-five.
You know, all of us guy here.
But by my clock, I had one minute.
We started exactly five thirty.
To that clock, but see, that's what I'm trying to address, that clock can be changed, mine.
The journal, we got, your journal is seven forty-three.